January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, meeting of the US Planning Board is hereby called to order.
Jerry, I believe, um, Annis, aren't you be appointed to? Do you have an oath of office?
Yes.
Okay, so Annis would have to be sworn in also.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shitel?
Here.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Bari? Ms. Applegate? Councilwoman Jivers? Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Well, I'm not vice chair.
Excuse me. Every year, every year, Mr. Huberman?
I'm here, cheers.
And Mr. Carp?
Here.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shitel?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Jivers? Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Yes.
Mr. Carp?
Yes. So, Michael, how long now have you been on planning board?
All right, it's seven years, two thousand eight, maybe two thousand eight. Thank you for your service.
He started when he was square.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, where are we here? I would like to have a nomination, a motion for a nomination of vice chair.
Mike, I'd like to actually recommend proudly as well Curtis Huberman for two thousand twenty-three, uh, planning board vice chair.
Andrew O'Sullivan, Mr. Sebath, okay, the motion by Rob Barrow, that's the new nomination. Uh, thanks for the vote.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shitel?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yeah.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers? Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Mr. Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carp?
Yes. Honored to serve, thank you for that. It's been honored for having Curtis as my special man, and we should get to serve her there, thank you. Okay, um. So, election of the municipal secretary, the point secretary, if that's the matter, did you vote on that, right? So, Lisa Gotti is elected as municipal secretary, and Cindy, thank you for your service, who are going to be, um, point secretary. Okay, um. There's a resolution, next on the agenda, is a resolution for adopting planning board procedural guidelines in two thousand twenty-three, P B two thousand twenty-three dash R dash oh one. Yep. Yeah, uh, please call, uh, vote or vote.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shitel?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers? Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carp?
Yes. Next on the agenda. It is, it's, thank you, agenda. We voted all together, very good, we're, we're.
We voted all together, in seven or one seat, in the, about check, when you give out a point of this, vote on the subject.
Yeah, so, on the present agenda, the A through Y, I'm going to read you off the items, if you can vote on all items, anybody has any objections to any of the items, please, uh, speak up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make, uh, make sure everybody got the email from Lisa today, there were some changes in the proposed rates for Chris Jefferson and Ian Hill for the planning board, uh, consultant engineer, and consultant, uh, environmental consultant. So, the hourly rate should have been less than what they originally proposed, so I still make sure everybody's aware of that.
That's good. And, um. Okay, so, thank you, well, and, um, if anybody needs to be, kind of, give the rating, or, kind of, what, send them, so, somebody is, and, uh, you should be, uh, there to vote your vote the way you want. So, the present agenda, A through L, I'm going to read off the items, and then they can vote. Um, declaration of official and other due payments received in meeting notice concerning fines, patents, and package, P B two zero two three dash article two. B, resolution set for regular meetings, first call Wednesday each month, P two thousand twenty-three, this part, this whole three. C, authorization for chair or vice chair to approve bills and vouchers. D, traffic safety, safety officer, Sergeant Kevin Loretucci. Fire D, fire marshal, Tim Lynch. And take off that, Dan Obermills, T. G, planning board engineer, Fran Houshri. H, planning board attorney, Mark, who's the girl, Muller, T C, Jerome Muller, that's right. I. Environmental engineer, Ben, please engineering associate, Chris, Justin. J, traffic engineer, or associate, Fozzy Masu, E D. K, planner, virginist association, David Novak, E D, A R S and P. And L, planning board voice and air engineer, G Z A two, environmental, Inc., Mark, who is. Um, please call, uh, anybody object, any of these, the present agenda items, that are ready, well, if not, say, if this call at all, go.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shitel?
Yes.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman?
Yes.
Chairman Carp?
Yes. Next up on the agenda, liaison reports.
Mike, I just want to, uh, right here, just a little something different this year, the board doesn't have to appoint liaisons because, um. Our class four member, Annis Beg, is actually a member of the environmental commission, so he's basically represents the environmental commission on the planning board. And this year, um, Jody Corrie is actually a class two member, she's a city member in the portable housing committee, so she will report on the activities of that.
Okay, great. And any of those committees are very, is, okay.
I didn't want Alan to steal that down.
We could do it. Um, so, he was running on my shoulder. So, I just know it's important, anyway, because it's not here, right?
Yeah.
Correct? Both table nine, there are no comments. Okay, um, public comments, anybody, um, from the public, which the speak on non-agenda items, with the, of the, the naming, add, for the record.
Uh, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service, for your, your chair, vice chair, following, um, state, the box, twenty-nine areas of having. And, um, I, I just want to say a couple things, you, you're probably aware that the D, the hearing today, about the inland flood rule. And open, uh, public time is, it's open as well, February third. And I just wanted to remind everybody that because, um, it was said in the, uh, closer, uh, council meeting this year, that, um, some members wanted to divorce themselves from the Virginia project, and, uh, Mr. Mary, you've said, uh, um. Which makes sense that it would be great if just county could handle it as big as the kind of areas is, so I just wanted to remind everybody that, um, you could just go online and submit comments up until February third, we supported the inland flood rule, which would help, maybe, cares, um, of that big problem. And, um, also, going forward, since it's New Year, um, I wanted to reiterate that the public, by and large, really would love to have a Zoom link for active participation, where folks who say they have children, something, could take part in these meetings. You know, I myself would, would love that, I mean, there's many town facilities that way, I mean, it's just been really, I think, kind of, now, I think, we need practice eventually, so I would just want to reiterate that, I would hope people will reconsider your position on having, um, interactive for all these meetings, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I told you, it's rather a pushing place, very briefly, I did, uh, attend virtually the Russell County Planning Board meeting this morning, and they did, uh, briefly discuss the warehouse, the part of the warehouse application. They, that application still is not complete, as far as the county planning board is concerned, and, uh, before, they were considering having special meetings to discuss it, you're not going to do that, uh, this will be discussed, uh, if, if the one is complete, and the regular monthly meetings are not expected. So, these will be duly noticed, and after, uh, we've been ready to be discussed, anyone can, uh, go to the website and see, the, uh, the regular needs will be, and, 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 uh, comment, uh, public time, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John, typically, when are county?
Uh, the second Wednesday of every month, nine in the morning, and it's always virtual, it's all about you, so, uh, everybody can attend, and they commented so much, if they listen.
Thank you, gentlemen. And, uh, the, 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 which, um, speak, please step up. Okay, very done, um, moving on to the farm preservation. Welcome back, I'm signing here, I'm afraid to be, Kyle, thank you for the other day.
It's, it's, I just made a statement, but it's, Sam, it's been, please, if it's just a working session, it is not a hearing, on this night, in the morning.
That's correct, there'll be no vote tonight, it's typically what we do with the different elements of the master plan, we'll have a open session for public board comments, and staff, and they've had consideration, introduce a revised document. Uh, if we get through it tonight, and the revisions are relatively minor, then the next meeting, I'll notice where we actual adoption of the document.
Okay, given that this is a work session, people will not be scoring any, that's the final question.
That's correct, and we're going to notice is, the, the, um, the document, I did put up on the website before the holidays, to give everybody an opportunity, more than a couple weeks to redo it, and the board members have an electronic copy, and a hard copy, so.
You said, uh, just David, it said, expressed that the real reason for Dave's meeting is the sort of feedback, um, and I understand that you have received that from, at least, and David also suggested a written exam to find out how well you know your exam.
We got some incident right here, it's like, why is there a community?
So, you know, this is a rather comprehensive document, and it really, it, it built upon the previous, uh, farm preservation plan, it's also an excellent document, uh, it is broken up into ten different sections, um. And represents, what, for an optional element, to the master plan program, uh, the municipal land use law provides that there are actually green, uh, obligatory documents, you have to adopt, uh, the planning would have to adopt. Uh, golden objective, no land use plan, they have to adapt their entitlements, that is, um, immediate to go, you have to adopt. Um, and nothing else in their share plan, the industry, we did not, that did not identify as an obligatory document, document in the master plan section of the statute, but currently, in the statute, when it talks about the journey. Says that, if you want to have a zoning law, you have to have a healthy element, their share plan, so that's why we said it's also like, obligatory items. Uh, and we have adopted, there were a dozen different elements here in town over the years, um, those that are obligatory, because, and I remember that are optional, and, you know, that's to your credit, because, you know, you just, I thought, I did with a bare minimum, and you go, we're going to wait beyond that. Uh, with respect to a farm land preservation element, that is, and municipal land use law, um, it specifies three components that have to be included, one, required, even though we, of all properties in the means that now have, uh, second, the last three days, state, we shall, companies, ordinances, support, promote agricultural activities. Then it's the plant for preserving additional farm land, uh, and the amount of numbers that would be achieved. And the document told you, why they are in fact doing that, and obviously, it's because Wes Windsor has a very significant agricultural background, so a lot of specific on that, it's here showing, uh, how much agricultural land historically existed within municipality, and all there have been, seem to have been amounted to, tell us over time, there still is a substantial amount of agricultural land, uh, pretty had in the municipality. And the reasons why we're doing this is to preserve your architectural heritage, uh, and concerns by plan, or, you know, open space, and any visual entity, and the actual use, so, permanent property itself. Uh, David also suggested that you like to read all six pages, but I thought he was joking, I said, I'm not going to do that. Um, I thought it might be best just to go through each section, what my, uh, um, he's going to briefly summarize it, and move on to, you know, comments from the public. Uh, introduction to the plan, pretty much what I just said.
I'd like to go to Roman and Willow, page three.
Okay, we still have two pages already for the public.
Oh, where, um, where, uh, uh, Andrea Mandell's name should be removed, because the papers fall down in the back. See, I corrected it for you, and also, uh, has, I don't know if the Ag Advisory Committee has had their reorganization yet.
They have, and the Ag Board also met with Dave and me, and reviewed this draft document, um, and their comments were incorporated in the document.
Thank you, Sam, but in relation to page three, is Steve Janney still the chair and Charles Applegate the next chair?
Yes.
Okay, that, 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 that could change with a reorder, but it has not, thank you.
Um, and there is the introduction, some of the, uh, alright, is there anything?
Yeah, I had a comment on this introduction, I think, uh, paragraph, second line, I think, if, 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 can, can exist among, the quarter among them, not even three among them.
I'm sorry, or what?
Second line of paragraph, it starts with the chief among them, I rather put, uh, I rather change chief to important among them.
The chief among them, there are involving, there is involving land state.
I rather use important, yeah?
And increase.
Yes. And also, on the comment, just clarification, the second paragraph, third line, you mentioned, it is three hundred acres of open space, and the next line, it only five fifty acres, consist of private, privately, and the municipality, uh, study preserved farmland. Who owns the, this, five fifty is too small, from eighty, eighty, who owns, that's what you meant?
Sorry, didn't quite have, have thought of that.
Second paragraph.
The second paragraph, I think you said the third.
Today, we, with over eighty-three hundred acres.
Eighty-three hundred acres.
Of open space, let's use the app, and the next line, it said only five fifty acres, consist of privately, and miss, 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 municipality, reserve farmland, so. We are talking over the, almost seventy-eight hundred, man, who owns that?
Um, that I will double check, because.
I, I get into that, Joe, there's two different types of, I guess, preserved land, one would be farmland preserved, and the other would be open space preserved. The eighty-three hundred acres is a total, the total of the farmland preserve and the open space preserve, only five hundred and fifty acres are farmland preserve, and they're on township owned grounds. The rest of them are owned by the state, by the county, preserved through homeowners associations, township parks, county parks, um, that's what makes up those eighty-three hundred acres.
I agree with you. Anything else?
Yes, um. Same page, third paragraph. The A paragraph, it mentions spur line, I mean, I think, before this was that spur line, regarding the B line, right?
Yes.
So, and, and, my, I can store the, the, so, in the line, I would be waiting to have the person, lots of, that I have.
You put maybe in quotations, that it's a nickname. Anything else? Uh, regarding the deep line, do we, do we need to insert anything regarding the plants, water, the transit, to, 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 like, that?
Now, this is just farmland preservation, you know, and it's just a description.
Got it. The next section is, has a overview of the master plan, and I have, just one question at the bottom of the page, but, it's very difficult for that. At the very bottom of the page, we identify some of the optional elements, but not all of them, and we can either say, um, have either examples, or we can punch it out, or, um, you should, like.
Well, it's, it's funny, I would want to add, since this is the farmland preservation elements, uh, an optional element, correct, I would want to add that to this list, as this. Um, also, I'm wondering if, uh, to be added on that list, as it is an optional element, it is an element, I think, we are going to have within our, uh, master plan, because the, the green building and sustainability, uh, optional element.
Yes, and that.
That, and that is also listed in the M L U L.
That's the new one.
Yeah.
And then, on the paragraph right above, the enumeration of all those, I think it's, uh, it says, I showed you utilities element is optional, I don't know why that one was picked out of all the others, but we should believe that sentence.
Because you mentioned, I mean, this, look, correct, yes.
Some of the elements have been approved? Already?
Uh, there are thirteen different elements that has been approved.
We should, we should know what elements have been approved.
Um, we can do that, I think that's somewhere else in the document. At the bottom, as we get to A, since you drew my attention to it earlier, so that I can draw it for everyone, what did you, on some, roll, you can say, for, in, 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 uh, uh. I don't see where that, uh, it's, it's, it's in Singapore, in the footnote, yes, I'll do it. Thank you, you're welcome.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I'd like to stay, I think.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's stay with page by page. That's, yeah, I don't know if the page, the page numbers, like, are not lining up. Yeah. So, A eight, I have, A is two point one volts.
Yeah, hey, we got that, one ton of policy is free, yeah, so, that one, we probably not, but I'd like to go, like, page by page, so that we don't, you know, around, and, um.
Okay, Michael.
Okay, so, before we jump to page A, where were we?
Bottom, page four.
Page four, four, one point, one point to, are there any changes, mods, suggestions, add, additions, changes on page four?
We added farmland, but the way to be in the last two seconds.
I don't care. Yes, and, and, we're also going to add all the other master plan, how, uh. Element. Optional element, there's, go down, and, and. And if you could throw in, what we talked about is the improvements, maybe you can just highlight, sort of, all the elements, the, the, these have been approved, and if you can list more, and I'm just, means they're approved. And, anything else on page four? Page five, one point three, farmland preservation plan elements requirements, or any change in mods?
Yes, uh, number three, uh, lower case, number one, um, the acronym ADA is used here, and it does not mean Americans with Disabilities Act.
Yes.
But it does mean Agricultural Development Area, as per page thirty-two of the document, this is the first citation of ADA in the document, I would like to spell that out.
Yes. Good point, first, thank you. I'm seeing my mother's name also.
Okay, there you go, there you go.
Public area, public area, any, any culture development area?
Agriculture development area is what ADA stands for, in this context of this document.
Anything else on page five? Here in, here in nine, we don't know, we didn't write wrong on page six. We changed this, mods, adds. My page six. Here we're done. And just to, to summarize, going page five and six, that section identified first municipal land use law requirement, as well as the state agricultural development, really requiring for permanent, uh, program. Uh, thank you, so, before we go on to the mark, I'm going to have, um, I'm going to have you, kind of like, you, you, kind of like, review, like, what section, and the pages, and then we'll go with any change in the mark. So, on page seven, section two, you're calling policy, could it be goal and policy, or changing policy? Only one goal is spelled out in this document, that's why we said goal. Alright. If we need a second goal. Go ahead, Michael, nevermind. Yeah. Well, it's done, you're going to, in, the one, over. Well, it's time, you're gonna, there's one overriding goal. And then there's a whole series of policy statements associated with it.
Okay, that, this kind of sounds a little.
Yeah.
Okay, so um, can you just kind of describe what section the goal? Can you tell me what that goal is? Describe the goal.
The goal, I talked about. Uh, performing support for the protection and conservation of the township remaining farmland. And uh, support of the agricultural economy of the community. Uh, that's the overall article, and then there's. Five different policy statements associated with that call, one talks about preserving parcels. Within the townships to be designated farmer conclaves, um, that should be. Farmland is for preservation only. Uh, the second policy statement talks about recognizing agricultural as a historically significant element that is where the community. Uh, third policy talks about preserving specific farmland property when it is due identification. Looking for a table later on in the document. And then the fourth policy comes out of the state program for promoting uh, tourism. And then finally, for once, the last one talks about promoting locally uh, drone drones. And for each of those policies, there's a lot more detail in the body of the.
Thank you. I actually had, sorry, time had changed in deep.
Just at the bottom of the footnote. At the very very bottom, chapter G already out.
Oh, yeah. In eight, the the section two, the very bottom, it's it's a miss.
Okay, well.
Thank you, definitely, okay, thank you, Brian.
I had asked people on my own policy, do I have to define? Uh, like, open space and recreation plan, I mean, seven, eighty, whatever. Can you tie down this to the map numbers?
I'm sorry, where are you going, how's it?
Policy three, you have those ID numbers, seven, eighty. Can you tie down this to be maps, that that we show this uh, this land?
We we can make a reference to the map.
Yes, that's me.
Yes.
Very good, thank you, man. Anything else regarding both the goal and outcome? Any other changes? Okay. Um. You.
Section three.
In three agriculture background.
Here's some historic agricultural background. I've got found this section quite interesting to read. Um, it carried back to very founding O S Windsor, when it was called Windsor. And it provides a lot of detail about, you know, population growth and other sub subsections of this. Section, it talks about the actual loss of farmland property acreage over time. And I said the numbers are pretty startling. Um, I think at one point you had about eighty three hundred acres of farmland. And you're down to about twenty nine hundred acres or so, if I'm not mistaken. Still, I see you're gonna give them out. Um, but in terms of the text that is written, are there any comments or questions about it?
Uh, line two of three point one. Uh, hence next, is not a possessive, it's the plural, hence, no possessive.
Else on, three point one?
You ready? Wait, 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 are you talking?
You're on page uh, uh, page ten, three point one, history of agriculture.
I have. Just before then. You thought it was a. Are you mentioning twenty seven hundred two hundred acres, and then in the next line, fifty two, forty three acres? If I, I add them together, they become eighty ninety five acres total. But this, that is different than what you have in page two, eighty three hundred acres. They.
It is, I believe it's the same issue that they mentioned earlier about. Now, how do you categorize farmland and some of its preserved farmland and stuff like.
Oh, eighty nine, fifty five, eighty three, they're, they're not saying, definitely. Fifty nine, fifty five acres. On page ten, yes, what's say they three hundred on page two? So, um, different acres difference.
Is it, is it a, is it a? A time difference, in other words, page three hundred today was the twenty eight ninety five?
I like to double check, I went off the.
Right, this.
One, one is open space and one is uh, farmland assessment. Farmland assessment is, you need to do something, you get farmland assessment, right? There's two different things you're talking about.
Inside.
Okay, right, farmland assessment, it needs somebody has, well, if you property there, then it's that's a, as farm, but it's not farmland, open space. Is that, that consent?
That's correct, that have a minimum of five tubable acres that has to produce a certain amount of income on a yearly basis in order to qualify for farm assessment.
Okay. Anything else regarding three point one?
That's uh, three point two, farmland soil, and this is the. Natural conservation service characterization of farmland soils. There are. Four farmland soil types. Prime farmland, it gives a definition of what that means, and characteristics of it. Then there's uh, farmland or statewide importance. For each of these categories, they give the detail of what. The attributes. Uh, the prime farmland and the farmland and statewide importance are obviously not significant. Are categories, there's then there's farmland of local importance, which is somewhat lesser category, and finally. What they refer to as unique farmland, which is very close to the farmland and local importance. Um, the fifth category, really, that a farmland is not prime farmland, that they really just group all other acreages. Into that. As category, and this becoming very important with the. Now, when the state is looking at property. If they want to acquire, and their focus is on those first two categories, uh, deserve it as farmland.
Not difficult, yes. But I I was just gonna say, you know, you're talking about unique farmland, and you're talking about citizens problems, you're talking about hours. I mean, there was a girl, and I could, more please, why would you say that?
I cannot turn you with the state of New Jersey, but sometimes. Um, but it is part of their definition.
If you, yeah, if you're explaining. Alan, my take on it would be that um, the Natural Resource Conservation Service, that's up to the United States government?
Correct, how, yeah, that.
Okay, so I'm saying that that these would be general definition, but under United States government. It was kind of much. You're, I I I get your point, that we don't have citizens. Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't stop hanging it out.
Quick question on my part, and we got a question, on number four, unique farmland. We start with unique farmland, land other than prime farmland. But the other, have we have other than prime, home land of state and home land for local importance? Other than that, or just prime farmland only?
They, it's again, the prime farmland and the farmland, the statewide importance are the most critical. Uh, category.
Now, now, when you define unique farmland. You say unique farmland. Is is land other than prime farmland, which is number one?
Yes.
It's not, should be number one, number two and three. Other than number one, nine, two and three, but that's only number one.
Uh, when you look at. The categorization for, if there's that number two and. Really, three and four. Um, in some measure, they are not grouped together. Uh, but based on soil types and other conditions, uh, there is some distinctions to be made. And that's where they have a separate categories.
No, I understand the category, I, that's, I I'm gonna, you sure. My, when you start, the unique from there, it is other than prime. I thought it should be other than prime, number two, which is farm, uh, farm land of statewide importance, and number three also, it's other than all three. That is the unique farmland.
I'm not gonna argue that with you, because I understand what you're saying. All I'm saying is when you look at the Natural Resource Conservation Service definitions, these are their definitions. And then it comes down to the state, and the state votes that prime versus uh, farm and the statewide importance. Uh, the state of New Jersey, you mean, when they find fine distinction between your categories.
All right. I think you have handed.
Do you have a, have a question on, on. Um, obviously, you know, balance point, we don't have any unique farmland to them, right? We don't go, we don't go out, and I am very concerned. And then, so on page twelve, when we list the input. Did, I don't, I don't know if we've done it or not, we listed all before, probably five farmland types. And if it's zero, it's a zero to show that. That the um, you know, reviewed and you don't have it. I I don't, just, I'm just trying to think of down here.
By the mapping?
Uh, yeah, it would be all, yeah, I guess, guess you wouldn't have any colors in that, though, because it's zero.
No, by the mapping. The um, there are some, there is some matrix identified.
Oh, there is.
Farmland.
Okay.
And it's recognized, it talks about.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay, talks about the soil, how any growing is needed for this farm.
Okay, the example, honestly, I'm sorry, I I I missed it. Because um.
But maybe to Michael's point, that if, if you use the the titles.
Yes.
On page eleven.
Thank you, Chris.
There should be consistency of those titles in table two. So, where it says farmland of unique importance, I think the language should change. I think this is Michael's point, to know, unique farmland, or whatever the exact listing as per the N R C S denotation.
We have that, we have farmland or unique.
No, 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 but look on the previous page.
On page twelve, first, page eleven, that's why I didn't see the word unique.
It says unique farmland. And say, use more language on, on page four.
Joe, on the chart of page four, I'm changing. Um, farmland, we can, that's true, the name is one.
Uh. It's different, uh, uh, that's the. Thank you. I think that's quick.
Yeah, thank, thank you for um, clarifying that for me, because I did not see the word unique, so now it's, it's, it's a unique, or a, the, the farm. Okay. But unique, but we're not, we're not growing any business. Okay, any, anything else on the, probably, if you want to? Okay, section four, farmland today.
This is where we do. And pretty detailed, everyone, the amount of acreage and where it can be counted. Uh, the farmland and the area for the entire municipality. It's broken down by township own. Based, uh, on. It's currently being farmed, preserved, township own farmland, and privately um, preserved.
So, uh, on uh, in section four dot one, where we have this uh, different types of land deeds. Uh, you have um, on page thirty and thirty one, that we have the potential with. Uh, farmland, it could be preserved in the future. I believe that, that page.
We talked about all that on page. I'm sorry, page thirty and thirty one, did you say thirty or thirty one?
I'm sorry. Sixteen and seventeen.
But if we go on to, uh, I think, along, how, you know, to.
What, what it pertains to, the, the, four dot one.
Oh, okay.
Asking where. Where this, I think, there is. Still not, okay.
The. At figure two, farmland type. It's taken all the information on table three, farmland inventory. And synthesized it into that. Figure, there are maps in the back of the report. That we can identify where they are, how we do it is, these properties are identified with map O two, and depending, say, for example, at the top of page four. So we've done that.
Oh, all right. When, when those are, the whole, all the farments were the ones that could potentially be preserved because of private doing. Yeah. Okay, now. I love, I mean, so they are identified.
They are identified.
Yes. All right. That's what I was concerned.
Look, that also, uh, show. We're having a clear.
Pardon me?
That also, that show is there is basically a challenge, whether what it's, you know, there's. From the inventory, but it's. They look at, I don't, I don't see how.
Yeah, it is here, it's. Although it happened, if I may, it is a territory, it's everything. That O one twice.
Okay, I don't know. Go to map O two.
And we will. Well. Again, um.
If you go to map five, that'll list the properties that are. Potential acquisitions for farmland preservation.
After reading all of his maps, again, there are, they are not encompassed, individual, it does not encompass the entirety of your municipality. You know, they show the municipality in certain setting, like in sections, so it's a more visible incident. What we can do to. Resolve that issue is insert a map that shows, like, section one is map O one, section two is.
Yeah, but you know, maybe, I think, to be more precise. You know, they can say they're met with this, with the two O one, to be able to. Better, but.
Um, just a question regarding the map, um, map O one.
What's like overview and quadrants, right?
No, okay, correct.
My correct, with that. Like, you have, you have, you know, so. But, but again, it should be, it's sort of. We're, I don't think you.
The map O one is that section, where it brings it up in the sections, but I don't think that's clear. Right, the whole, we, I'll be paid on it. And highlighting the more obvious where section one, two, three, four are.
Okay, thanks, Al. Thanks, Chris. On your data.
Yeah.
Okay, now, it was like the, the.
Allison Miller, forty one, moves abroad. Um, uh, I've been reading seminar on space since. Um, uh, I've been reading seminar on space since the laws were formed in number six. And you are the doors, um, not necessarily the clouds, are are many people who are used to know this place. Please open space for recreation. And we were looking at um, five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Um, Dallas, our open space, um, parcel of numbers. And they're continuous. And we're getting towards four hundred plus acres there. Um. I noticed that numbers three and four, which also continues, are farmland preserved as of now. But I urge you not to farmland preserve any of the other properties that are openly owned by West Wings and Township in that area. Now, that area is called in the mayor's um, open space uh, report of two thousand three. Ride room run park, which as it is currently harmed, you probably have never heard of. Um, but I I look at it as Mercer County Park Southeast. Because there's so much potential there. Not only, uh, as the mayor's report said that almost twenty years ago, uh, for. Equestrian trails, but hiking trails, all times, but all recreation. And we don't know what recreation will need in the future. And having such a enormous area to develop for recreation for various different fields. Maybe for a recreation building. Um, would be, I think, a very valuable part of our township in the future. We don't know what a, which will be these five years. We don't know what our needs will be. But if we preserve this continuous space of over four hundred acres. Uh, we'll have a lot of potential for what we will need there. And if we, if we make it farmland, we lose some of the potential. So I urge you to take a look, uh, another look at, um. We don't own number seven, but we do own five, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve. Uh, I urge you to take another look and take any of those that are slated for our farmland off the farmland list. Because. We don't know what we're leaving for. And will be a very, very valuable addition to our partner. I I also hope that you have had number twenty two, farmland, that's a good issue. Uh, number twenty three is mostly wetlands. Let's come to it. So it is a farmland. Anyway, if if that's not here. Um, I'll be happy to show it on a map. Um, my point is.
Thank you. Allison, if you can give me a number later, I'd appreciate it. But on the table, it's great, it is simply a farmland inventory, it's not extended directly.
The recommendations come later.
Yeah, but we're only, we definitely skip around in the report, that's why.
You mean, you mean, I'm a piece plan, but let me talk this out.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just move it with the statement with regarding Allison said. If the board remembers back in twenty twenty, we adopted the new land use plan, uh, the master plan. So we kind of have an idea of what our population group is going to be for the next ten years. And then in twenty nineteen, we adopted the open space recreation plan and joined the properties that were not farmed, preserved, but open space preserved to anticipate the additional growth impacted in past regulation we need. This document just talks about farmland preservation properties. And if you go to map O five, where it talks about farm preservation proposals, those are the limited properties that we're looking to potentially preserve as farmland. But if you take a look at properties three and four, that's the whole farm. We acquire that, it's it's preserved, but it's not farmed and preserved, it's open space preserved.
Okay, I thought it was farmland preserved.
No, and then also if you take a look at number seventy eight, that's the old gen status. This board approved the subdivision on that. So there are going to be homes on that property there. So three, four, seventy eight already are either preserved or they have a subdivision approval for it. And then we're working on property thirty seven, the Sanders Farm on Cranberry Road with the state to preserve that as farmland preserved. So there's very limited targeted properties that this plan calls for for preservation for farm.
Thank you for clarifying it, but I I just noticed that some of these were slated for farmland reserve. And I wanted to talk when they first came up. Please don't do it. I I told you why. But I think that anything that's not connected to this. That is valuable for farmland preservation should be part of it.
So Sam, some of the properties that Allison's mentioned, uh, six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, I don't see.
Which which map are you looking at?
I'm I'm looking, I'm sorry, I'm looking at table three, table three, page fifteen, table three, that's the document. Let me when you're there.
Yeah, got it.
Okay, so um, uh, not number five, but six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. And it says that those properties are located in the Mercer County Agricultural Development Area.
Correct.
Okay, so um, how does that fact? Um, how do I reconcile that fact with Allison's comments about possibly wanting to use that very for recreation?
Those properties were purchased with green acre funding for open space preservation, not farmland preservation. Or just farming those properties, they're not preserved farmland to preserve open space. So when their need arises to put in active or passive recreation, they just won't be farmed anymore.
But if, but what about this designation located in a Mercer County agricultural development area, what does that mean?
It means that if we we had an option when those problem, when we wanted to preserve those properties, we could either preserve them through the county farmland preservation funding and the state ADA funding, or we could cross, uh, preserve them through green acre funding, open space funding. Even though they're in the agricultural development area, that the county says they're prime farmland. The county gives you extra money if you want to preserve farmland. We opted not to preserve farmland, just to preserve open space. And we're continuing to farm. So they're preserved as open space, not farmland. And remember the distinction, farmland preservation is to preserve farms, not necessarily open space. There's a lot of criteria, you have to produce like a horse farm. The only way you can preserve it through farmland preservation is if they're producing something. So if they're, you know, they're producing livestock or anything, that's the only way, otherwise it's open space. So all that chart does is just say it's preserved, but it's not preserved as farmland, it's being farmed until it's needed for active recreation. And it happens to be within the county ADA area, but we did not capitalize on the ADA fund that preserved this farm.
Thank you.
Sam, that's.
Of course, I think your explanation is excellent. I think that should be added as an explanation in case Green Acres gets, people will look at it and say, oh, why are you doing this? If it's going to be open space, you're farming, I think that explanation is perfect. And perhaps we can add that.
Would Joe, you know, with Dave, no, and he gave me a rainbow word.
Thank you, Sam. For what acreage purchase we created as members, maybe what they use, they can use for recreation for.
Yeah, anything for green acres that we acquire um, can be used for passive or active recreation. We can farm it, which we do, and we have farmers farm in forests, and we have six year farm or five year farm leases. And that has to be open to the public, even though it's farm and it's owned by the town and it's farmed by a private farmer. The public is allowed to go on that preserve, on that preserved open space, even though it's farm. Now they can do that, they just can't destroy the crops to them. So they can go down the farm roads or whatever else, or they could use it for, you know. Skiing, prosthetic skiing, restoration, if you ever get any snow, there's farms.
Is that one, this, I noticed in the table that all properties soon is condemnation, so it's second now. It takes that. In the tip, the last paper, third last page, over page mayor fifteen. There's no page number on that, it says all property condemnation code, that's second now. Start at the end of these, you're looking at the map, go to the right at the end.
I'm not looking at the map, I'm looking at.
No, look at the end, start with the end page. Sam, pen, pen, pen.
Oh, oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, we just got a head of the million dollar grant, it's not, you know, because we just got the check today, so, yeah, yeah.
Great. Anything else on you, page fifteen, table three, on the recording? Okay, uh, what about page sixteen, as far as the table should be in, in there? We talked about it a lot. Okay, seventeen. Also, please look at why we had some red letters, there's some, any, any reason for that? Okay.
Yeah, this, this comment of the battle, we. And they just in the time that they're just one side of the chair. Sam, just to, you, because your comments, in there only three categories, you just want to do normal farm, gold and patterns. If you print in black and white, green won't show, the red won't show.
It it don't, it don't. The final document will be a cover document, which will have a way of sizing.
Sam, just for my clarification, what what designation gives the township the most flexibility is that open space reserve?
It would be through green acres, open space, because our farmland is very restricted.
Okay, so when we buy property that comes up, we immediately move it into open space preserve.
Well, no, we take a look at the master plan, what it calls for, so. And and Allison, I think, was an elected official at the time, those properties on Windsor Road came up for acquisition. Even though they were in the county ADA area, the decision was not to preserve through farmland preservation, it's preserved through open space, so we have more flexibility.
Right, now, when you do open space preserve, it can always be changed later on if you wanted to, to farm it, right?
No.
Oh, no, okay.
Once we take green acre money, then we buy the property, then it's under the green acre regulations.
Okay.
What we, what we've done in the past was we've used our open space money.
Right.
And we bought properties. And then a year or two later, we sold the development rights to the state and county and preserved it as farm.
Right, okay, so.
So pretty much everything down across from the community college of Old Trenton Road, on both sides of Coverley Road. All of that is farmland preserved, that's the farmland preservation belt we have. And then we have other little farms, like the applicant farm on Conover Road and a couple others near and there that are preserved. Steve Jack's farm on um, Windsor Road right across from Sapling, that's farm preserved.
So if we use our own money instead of green acre money or other money, and if we wanted to preserve it, be a flexibility and designated in something else later on, right?
Well, to a degree we do, we, but in order to get funding through what Green Acres calls the planning incentive grant. We have to have an approved open space recreation plan, which we adopted, we re-adopted in twenty nineteen. Those properties that we list on there for green acres, open space, not farming, green acres, open space, preserved properties. Um, we're pre-approved for that, we pretty much cast a die on that, we can't go for farmland preservation on those properties, it has to be green acres, open space.
Thank you.
Sam, have you heard of any legislation you you ran through around that, yeah, open space property that somehow statement commodity, another law and residential, don't allow commodities.
I I haven't heard anything like that now.
No, I mean, then the one to take, three acre money, they owe forty, money, they owe you. No one is maybe put up a living on there, I think, a lot of things.
If if every time, every year I come back to council to get another million or so from green acres to reap versus for property we already bought. That big long document I send you guys that has the map with what they call a recreation, open space inventory, it lists by block and lot and acreage. Every single piece of property in town that we have preserved and accepted green acre funding with, and that's reported at the county clerk's office.
Sam, for that, you send a green acre piece, but these after twenty years, what's the last payment they'll give for good over one?
The last payment we got was actually today, it was five hundred thousand dollars, it was the reimburse us for a property that we fronted money on in two thousand and one. So the state's about twenty years behind the reimburse us. If we didn't front the money, then it would be homes on those properties.
Okay, that's a very short. Um, anything regarding table four and page seventeen, and at the bottom, you can open it funding in acquisition. He was probably doubting.
So the table identifies twenty, twenty seven different properties that are not preserved farmland with development or tools. One map, the last eighty acres, six hundred and fifty three acres, three, three. Perceives losing that to the development. Next section talks about funding acquisitions. And then just maybe how it points out that the township acquired a total of sixteen hundred acres over the past twenty eight years. I mean, identifies the acquisition clause for that open so, permanent open space. The following section talks about the products and business of agriculture. And it's interesting to see how back in nineteen ninety nine, there were about twenty nine hundred total acres. Um, it was devoted to cropland by two thousand eight, two nine years later. That figure had dropped from twenty nine hundred, a little more than fifty hundred total acres. And then by two thousand nineteen, it's dropped to eleven hundred and seventy four total acres. So you can see where this is, you know, going in terms of uh, acreage devoted to cropland. Interesting, and you can see that very graphically in figure three. Interesting when you look at the next graph, which is about livestock.
Uh, figure three. Um, I really don't see much distinction in color, the fruit, prop and fruit. I realize as Alan, Mr. Chick told, said, you know, fruit's not a very good category in Western, obviously, it.
Semper, semper.
Yeah, okay, you're correct, Alan, thank you, you're right, you are right, thank you for the correction.
May or not.
Um, I do see, I think I see eight inches of fruit in the twenty nineteen graph, but still the colors of of fruit and prop are so close to one another that they're, the bar graphs do not recall.
It would be.
They can adjust.
Play along, too.
You know, I I thought it was just that orange was a combination of prop and fruit.
No, there's a sliver of this.
There's a sliver in twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, right?
Yeah, when when it trended obvious, maybe. And then just.
You barely see it, but it's there. Thank you.
Agent Holmes.
Just, just one minor thing on page seventeen. Just, just one minor thing on page seventeen, Joe, under four point two. One, two, four lines down where it says funding for farmland reservations. It should be credited.
So reservations in town, right?
Well, then I would.
Okay.
Then on page nineteen. The change in livestock. Most of this is attributed to more chickens. You did see the commentary about that. Thirty-six, nineteen ninety-nine is five hundred. And six chickens that they had in municipality. So. The graph looks about changing.
How did you arrive at the top of figures?
I mean, David ran it down and I think.
David, you know that's.
There is, there is information from the department of agriculture, which is like K D United.
And with those, with that poultry number. Does that include? Just poultry on farms? Does that include residential units that have chickens in there?
But I believe David said it includes those that have chickens and residential properties as well.
I was, I was driving into the playgrounds near the time. At the end of the chicken. By the way, I opened the door to farm. Yeah, well, yeah, it's about chickens.
Yeah, there's a certain, there's a certain acre. Or at least three acres of this. There is something.
And interpretation, you can have three chickens per zoning board interpretation. Considered pets.
That's right.
No acres required.
We spent good time on, on that.
Source of chickens on the ordinance.
Doing, or did, did this serve this?
Uh, what happens if they have, uh, no chicks? They only count if they have a chick.
Uh, let's. There is a whole ordinance that was written and never adopted that would regulate chickens and farm uses and everything else. Once this. This measurement alone gets adopted, we're gonna dust that off and bring it out of here.
With the kind of aspect, that's just for chickens. It's not for.
Just chickens.
Just chickens, yes. And, and lamas are considered pets too, because we actually have one in the building for, meaning on an interpretation, whether a llama is a pet. Something to look forward to, Stacy, at your zoning board meeting.
Tractor supply has been opening up in town, so the number may go up, because they sell chickens in the spring and spring.
What, what was that like?
Tractor supply has been opening up.
Tractor supply is not coming into town.
Then the chicken numbers may go down.
But tractor supply.
Going on to page twenty, table five, crop plan acres.
We have proposed, what we said, no, you're. See where the. Uh, what type of crops are we?
Yes.
Et cetera.
So we consider tomatoes vegetables for this chart, right? They're actually improved.
They are actually.
What was it being, like, in nineteen ninety-nine? Perhaps one.
Agreed.
Okay.
Page twenty-one, livestock count. We already talked about this. There's no, oh, we haven't got it down yet. Well, it's in two thousand nineteen. He's still alive. You lost the turkey.
So go, go in the sky.
You're looking at the change.
You had a turkey and the turkey died. Going under turkey. Good point.
Percentage increase of the egg chickens.
Find a hundred percent. Great. Okay, anything on page one? Question five.
There, you call the section, talk. About the various master plan documented, ordinances, without the effort in years. Um, they deal with issues of conservation and farming and open space preservation. And you've done a pretty impressive job in terms of. And going back to two thousand two to two thousand, a conservation plan element. Uh, two thousand nine with. Oh, that's one of the first sustainability plan elements in the state. And then in two thousand eighteen, we adopted that as a recreation element, and we mentioned earlier. In two thousand twenty with the Rendezza element. So all of those documents. Have specific commentary on farmland conservation. The next. Is there anything on the master plan? The following section. I think that the zoning board is just adopted to implement. For the master plan. Recommendations. And we adopted. Earlier, like the farm board, it's back in nineteen eighty-two. Earlier ones that were adopted in New Jersey. And we had other farming agricultural activities. They're permitted. Other, when they're permitted, and then by cluster design. There's the table talks about. And the regulatory control. One cluster which. Included a reform as well in space preservation. You make reference to your farmer's market and community boards.
On that citation, again, remove the possessive, just make it. Oh, page. It's thirty.
And early the tax, but not in.
Actually, uh, there's nothing else that's at all. Just keep it. I mean, like, Westminster Community Farm. Well, rural farmers market. Thank you.
Very nice. I like the writing. Of the farmer's market. There you go.
We're, we're, and, and we're grateful for the recognition of Township Council. And then. Thank you.
The next section of the document. Talks about the various programs. Um, that provide county support for. Uh, agricultural, farming preservation. Talks about the agricultural development area, which. Person mentioned at the outset. It talks about the county farmland preservation. Plan and talks about various. Preservation programs, beginning with page thirty-three. Identified as five or six. Their programs. Or any comment?
On, on, what page you on? Okay, on page thirty-two, I'm moving back to thirty-two. Um, I just would want. Uh, you to double check. That, uh. Resident farmer and former vice chair of the planning board. Uh, Steve Jenny is still the chairperson of the county MCA. I mean, that, again, they might go through the reorg, but. Uh, Steve's done it for a moment, so I wouldn't be surprised if he still.
If you want on page thirty-two. Uh, you may want to change our. Index. Area you gotta give it to one line above that. Uh, county freeholder to commissioner.
Yes.
Since they are longer, the three holders. Or wherever is that again? That'll be the new page. Two. Uh, starting to the last paragraph.
County freeholder and county commissioner.
Actually.
You know, anything else on the section seven?
Do we need to, uh, section seven, state of form? Can I ask you one question? On page thirty, we're very tired of that news. Finding some of the grand government. It's very the actual acronym for the.
Yeah.
They do. The meeting on page thirty-eight is a federal section that relates to. Uh, state programs. Uh, we started off with. State development, redevelopment.
And I'd like to build out from the title. Thank you.
And we move into. Various. Uh, program under the Department of Agriculture. Easy at N G D. We'll fill that out as well. Identify their various programs, and so you can, they're adopted in terms of three main. Order allocation here. And that ends the background section. Of this document. Coming in into. The agricultural issues. Is there anything else on that? All that's got on the information.
If I had any comments on. Using the head.
If you have any questions. So that's seven point four, N G D. Was under Green Acres Program. The, um. Identified apartments. Must all those be vetted in order?
Yes.
So the property had a willing seller, but wasn't. On the market per se, wasn't the actual market. And would we, you know.
And if you start with the right narrative. One might not be a willing seller, knocked on their door. Now they're interested. And then they participate.
Rob, most of those properties we acquired, they weren't for sale. My office sent writers out of interest to the property owners. See if they were interested in selling their bottoms.
I got it. So I can send, I can send, I mean, that, I saw, I'm sure the property is on the market. Also, when you find, I'm assuming that the whole part for the part.
We want to cut those real estate people out of the agreement.
Very clearly, that's the objective. It's sad, but. Willing seller, I mean, so. When condemned, we still get legal funding, right?
That changed recently. Before. If you condemn, we're not getting any community acres or any personal property, but they've changed that regulation.
You don't have to meet all five criteria. At the end of the fourth one, there's a four, so if they just think one. Let me say it that way to you. Nature of production.
I'm, I'm not here, would you send your.
You don't have to meet all five criteria. At the end of the fourth criteria, there's a four. And so I agree with you, you have to satisfy one criteria.
Sorry, my name is still, and you're not, Jason, far still. And team are part of your project, then you can approach, I guess, right?
Yeah, I think that's where the condemnation comes into play, where it says four of the properties integral to the project.
Question eight, I would call for this. If we identify nine different. Pictures in this section. There are eight pictures. Three. Um, one is in terms of setting a critical mass of. Farmland, that's our property in one area. And some statistics about that in conjunction with Robin's bill. Because it doesn't have to be. Simply defined by your municipal boundary, it can extend over. You know, the municipal boundaries, another, another town. I'm just looking if there's an identifiable critical mass of. Farm property to have preserved. That seem to be an area of concern. Prior fund map or direction. Document that we're, that we're talking with. Of the Ag Board. Um, second issue is leasing. You were talking to a lot of that already. You lease approximately nine hundred eighty-three total acres. Of land you owe. And. Of, of that total, four hundred forty-some acres are permanently preserved of its. Farmland pro, preservation program. Um, you have leases that are five. Years at length, and their general goal is fire in twenty twenty-six. Some municipalities mandate a five-year lease. And then an option for another five-year lease, that can spell that out. Um, and Robin, you know, for example, does it that way. Um, and it's what the recommendation was intended to. In the next section. Like, you know, there's obvious, we give over benefits. Like, you know, for the leasing program. Farmers could maintain the property as farmland. Uh, to get, to get rent, rent revenues. And, um. Which are typically created with taxes to the tenant property. Which are expensive. Power to build the plan. And it deserves to be, just to install that out in this section. And the next item is agriculture and recreation, that we mentioned earlier. It just states the position, meaning. Recreation of that. Different located culture and population centers throughout the town, the purely. Farmland areas. And that's something that the board should have some discussion about at some point. Um, to discuss, have you wanted to handle that? Sam, it said, or, there's only a handful of properties we are actually closing down, the flowers. The recommendations, actually. I don't think that necessarily, you know, the rate is, or, to, you know, it is something you should discuss.
No. That's a good question. I think you're on, uh, page forty-six. Under eight one one, we have A A C, and we find the book. Second line, you know. I'm sorry, what section? Eight one one. Eight forty-six. Are A C is therefore, it is for one, the question is for the one, A A C, that can define. The question is for the A A C, it's defined.
Oh, it is.
Agriculture advisory.
Yeah, I, I think it is, but I will double check if it's hot. A lot of here.
Yeah, it's, it hasn't been used in a while. Good point.
How this spread under eight one one? That is just looking at. So. Like, where we're going with that. I've got this. Was it even compatible with the issue?
Sorry.
The, the cannabis, cannabis is listed there. Eight, eight point one, now, now. It's cannabis, it's, it's, I wonder where. Where we're going with that, like, what is, like, the session you can.
On the very next page. But you're on, you're, you're doing everything.
Have a go through.
We identified this.
They simply wanted.
Yeah. I think the important issue there. It's a cannabis not presently protected by the right format. Uh, like hack is. There are limitations here, but because it's. Part of the public discussion today, we thought it was an important connection. And I think your position is that you should be actively published in it. But I think it's part of the public discussion. Yeah.
Well, also in eight quick nine, Linda, it is mentioned that the township. Uh, it instituted a ban to ordinance twenty two one dash eleven. On, on that issue.
I thought we covered it. And they consider that these were mentioned. Thank you, chairman. Uh, we talked about. Uh, it's part of the New Jersey Farm Management Act. Um, there's a woodland management plan.
What page you.
Page forty eight.
Forty. Only did you add up?
Forty eight. Yeah. This section talks about how woodland owners have to meet specific requirements. For the property living. Now, production and sale of forest products. Um, the following section talks about biomass production. And then interestingly section because. Overwhelmingly biomass.
Solid waste.
It's at the beginning of the.
Biomass defined, it's not like an everyday.
Joe, but definition of violence. As that is.
Joe.
Yeah, I just finished writing.
Okay.
Um, if you look on the top of forty nine, where we talk about. What biomass is overwhelmingly in New Jersey, it's our solid waste. Programs and depositing all that and how we deal with it. Seventy. Hmm? No, solid waste, not liquid waste.
Yeah, that's right.
And Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say?
She said poop.
Oh, I misunderstood what you said. That's. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And Joe on page forty nine. Do you speak forty nine?
It's the first time in forty years I heard that said in a public. Congratulations.
Yes. And Joe. Hello. On page forty nine, you have biomass one. What does one means?
I think that's it.
That's best quality biomass.
Not two.
Should have been number two. Okay. Now, the next section talks about soil protection standards governing soil disturbance. And the ordinance regulates this. Then finally, there's the issue of the farming population itself. And why the, you know, with those leases set to expire in a couple of years, how are we going to deal with? That issue. Um, in the recommendation sections, the second. Section to follow. Uh, we have some recommendations. For that.
I have, hold on a second. Just a question for you, Sam. In eight point eight, the farming population and the expiring leases, do we have any indication that the leases want to be renewed by any of the farmers that own?
They were just renewed last year, so they're good through twenty twenty six.
Okay, fine.
Okay, just so you know about that. The farmers that are currently farming. Our properties were the farmers who farmed them before we acquired them. So we don't have to go out to bid to bid out our farmland. If those farmers no longer want to bid, then we would have to bid out those properties.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, in terms of recommendations, we have a couple. Uh, one that specifically talks about the municipality's master plan elements. Um, we're suggesting that. Um, the township should consider adding an economic plan element to the master plan. Um, and specifically could be dedicated to the townships, amongst other things, to the township agricultural. Industry to discuss and promote West Windsor's agricultural industry. It would also contain other economic plan components. But in the context of this document, we point that out.
Sam, is that, is, yeah, is that something that we are going to be doing in economic?
Well, something happened in twenty twenty that prevented us from doing that because we really don't know what. Is going on, but yes, that's something we want to do. We're working on a couple of other elements this year. It probably wouldn't be until twenty twenty four, we tackle that.
Okay, and then in terms of. General land use planning considerations. We have a whole host of. Items ticked off on page fifty five. One relates to. Design standards for multifamily developments. We're actually seeing in some municipalities, they're now requiring community gardens as part of. Their open space considerations, for example. You know, so we could amend the ordinance if you agree with that, we would amend the ordinance accordingly. Um. The.
I said, I said, I like that.
Um, I wanted to hear it a second time. That was all.
Okay.
Uh, um. The issue of roadside stands is often an issue in communities. Um, we've suggested a standard here of twenty five hundred. Uh, if you're less than twenty five hundred square feet on a roadside stand, it could become just a simple permitting procedure. And if it's more than that, it would be a formal site plan application to the planning board. Um. We also recommend identifying nursery and greenhouses as an accessory use to agricultural. Agricultural use. We have seen in some other municipalities. Where some residents have shown up at hearings to fight. Nursery, nurseries and greenhouses. And saying it's not identified as an accessory use, so therefore you can't do this. Um, it should be part and parcel of the overall farming experience. Um, we talk about how you should amend the ordinance to permit. The storage of farm products. Um, permitting agritourism activities. I know there's a list of activities that are mentioned here. Some of them, we should really have a, if we're going to go down this route, we really need to have discussions about that. I have seen just very recently in one municipality where they do permit wedding venues. As an accessory use on farms and half the town showed up to complain. We, so we might want to discuss some of these particular activities. Um, and so most of these are fairly straightforward.
So. Where does something like this fit in? Or is it sort of, we, we, we just ignore it? Um, and we, a couple of pages earlier, we looked at woodland management plan. That talked about. Uh. Production and sale of forest products. So if a township residence just wants to sell firewood and has it out there on an honor system. I don't think that's something's regulated, is it? If the homeowner just does it, right?
Right.
And the, and that, it's not, it's not like it's been a problem in the township or anything.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
There was a case in a newspaper a couple. It must have been about a year ago where a kid was selling, uh. A C or something in front of his house and a curmudgeon neighbor. You know, called the, uh.
Oh, the zoning officer, you've got the zoning officer.
Yeah. Oh, but he was, the guy was really after that family for a lot of different things.
He probably had a been done again. It was your outcome on that, Joe?
Um, my recollection was the town. Yeah, they, maybe should the kid got arrested.
Kid got shot.
No, they, they had about a twenty eight second hearing and let the kid do what he wanted to do. Yeah.
I know exactly.
It makes you wonder.
But it wasn't West Windsor.
No. And then there's a commentary about regional collaboration. Especially particularly with Robbinsville since they're farmland, but yours, so. But you know, those are the general. Uh, broad recommendations and then there's the section entitled. Farmland preservation proposals and we identify. Five or six specific sites. Uh, which are, some of which are being considered. There's two that had been previously considered, but are now. No longer being considered. Or as a priority for preservation. I don't know if there's any questions about any of that.
Yeah, um, just on that, I guess, sixth bullet, the permit agritourism. It is mentioning about draft senate bill. I don't know if we usually put draft legislation into. Land use elements, but, um. I mean, a lot of these activities like weddings and milestone events. Called, we go like the same farmstead now. Uh, and then it's always going to be, I think, a question, once you open up farms and you, you have a lot of traffic coming in. And sometimes that affects residents that are. Adjacent there. I, I don't know, um. I don't think that we need to do that.
No, well, that's why I had suggested you really need to go through that list and decide. You know, which ones you may be supportive of, you might not be supportive of any of them. Um, these are examples of things that are spelled out in. Uh, the state's draft.
And then the last one on the, on the chickens. I mean, people, people can have chickens, but it's an acreage type of thing.
But what we basically. What, what we had, Linda, back when this plan was adopted originally, I think, what was it, two thousand ten, Joe, or something? That, that's when the chicken issue came up. We have a whole draft ordinance that deals with everything that's listed on this page here. That fleshes it all out, that says on residential properties with homes on it, how many chickens you can have, and if you have those chickens. What the chicken coop has to look like, how far the chicken coop is from the property line. Or we talk about free range chickens, everything in. Everything possible is in that document. It just didn't get anywhere.
Yeah, I know it didn't.
Yeah, but it addresses all these things about how many people you can have if you want to use your farm for weddings or. Um, other events that are on there. The main purpose of it ten, twelve years ago was to help support the local farmers. Who had sold the development rights, but weren't producing enough on their property in order to pay the regular bill. So it was something to kind of help those local farmers out. Right now. The farmers we have in town are commercial farmers. It's pretty much, you know, grains and corn and things like that is what they're growing.
Right. We have this getting farmstead.
That's separate. It's not, that's not a preserve farm. It's a must be the own property. It's an historic, you know, museum.
Getting so much business there that we need to bring it to another farm in town.
But, but I think the idea Sam said was to help out. Farmers who are kind of, you know, they're living at the edge. And I think, you know, it's just like through you the farm. I mean, you go there on Saturdays and Sundays and you have a lot of activities, a lot of events. I see really no downside. It helps the farmer out tremendously.
Yeah, but I mean, that's. That's a lot, lot of people going to church.
Well, keep in mind, we'll adopt an ordinance that would regulate that and they'd have to come in front of the planning board to show they meet all those code requirements. So the ordinance would address all those details. This is just a recommendation and then we detail it out.
Your ordinance would require them a site plan for, for example, if they're going to have. The weddings, they have the venue, they show it on the.
The only exception was that if it's a farm stand and it's twenty five hundred square feet or less, it's just a permit process.
Yeah, I mean. To me, it's something that's helpful to, to keep the farmers.
Have, have they been asking for it or like, have they responded?
Back when we wrote that ordinance, absolutely. Yeah, they came into the Ag Board meetings when we worked on. I think, Joe, that was one of the, the first year your firm was hired. And that's something Dave and I worked on with the Ag Board extensively and the Health Department. And, uh, actually there is a P R person from Purdue Farms in Delaware. Who actually sent a person up to help us with the ordinance on chickens.
Well, it's a health department.
Health Department had a lot of comments on that ordinance that's in my office on the bookshelf. Yep.
Do we have a ordinance on roosters?
We have no ordinance on chickens other than the interpretation that the zoning board said you could have three chickens and you're considered pets. There, there were no regulations on that. If you want to have a commercial. Operation for horses or, or, or chicken or cattle or whatever else, we have a very minimal section in the code on that. How far paddocks have to be set back from property lines and how many horses on a property per acre if they're not for personal use. We do have something very sketchy that's probably forty years old in the code.
So someone wanted to have three roosters as pets? They can do that?
They couldn't. No.
They could not.
They could not.
Those things are noisy.
That's correct.
Got it. Are you, are you on section nine yet? We're in section nine right now.
Okay, um, I, I had a question. I just wanted to make sure. That the current, uh, farmers in West Windsor or the tenant farmers in West Windsor have contributed to this document.
All three of the farmers are on our Ag Board and they've contributed to it, correct?
Okay.
That's all the farmers we have in town.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we got that on the record. Thank you.
Joe, where are we on this? Are we on, um, section ten or line nine, regional collaboration?
No, we, uh, we talked about that. Um, and as I say, with the farmland preservation proposals.
Okay.
We identify a number of properties that are being considered. Um, and historically were considered and we identified two that should no longer be considered.
Okay.
Now, and one, the site number, and the one is priority rank number four. Um, has been approved for a subdivision and on. Priority rank number five.
And Joe, on this, uh, then section ten point one, when you are discussing this. Um, uh, uh, priority rank number one or two or so and so, can you reference this to maps also?
Uh, we can certainly identify the map. Where, where it is.
Uh, the, the other question I had on this in terms of priorities. Um, like for instance, with priority ranked five, the last sentence says this site is no longer. This site is no longer a priority for preservation, so why is it listed?
Uh, because it was in the prior farmland. But I should say is the current farmland preservation plan. Um, so we wanted to just give a hit, you know, identification as to what has happened to those sites.
I'm just trying to understand because. They think that uh. Number four above that also has that stated this as uh, this site is no longer a priority for preservation.
Yes. Yeah, that site received uh. An approval for a subdivision for development, that's why that's no longer a priority.
Hey, Joe, um, in the um. On page fifty eight under ten point one, when you write, you write out open space and recreation and plan, can you just put the acronym in thereafter? Because you cite the acronym O S uh, O S R P everywhere else.
Okay.
Thank you. That's unbullied sport.
Maybe you want to have a table of acronyms at the end. Yeah.
Not a bad idea, actually.
I think I recommended that at a previous meeting. I I got like a dictionary.
Yeah, that's I like that.
Uh, sure.
Hi, my name's Sylvia Ascarelli, twenty seven Melville Road. And I'm particularly interested in the farms along Cranberry Road in section ten point one. And now that the that you've noted that the school district is no longer interested. In the Sanders and Wildflower Farms as potential school site. You know, and as the report notes, now both farms are on the preservation wish list and Sanders Farm is in discussions to sell the development rights. As you also probably know, the township has been steadily extending the sidewalk on Cranberry Road. Um, it should reach then the area opposite Van Ness Park sometime this year. And the master plan, I believe, calls for the sidewalk then to continue on the south side, on the Van Ness Park side. I would just like to ensure that any preservation doesn't preclude a wide multi-use path along Cranberry Road. By Sanders Farm and Wildflowers, if they choose to be go for preservation. That um, this would. Provide a safe part of a safe route to school, hopefully, one day P S E and G, hopefully in our lifetime. Will agree to extend the trolley line trail. Um, over into Plainsboro and kids need to be able to get there. Um, and that. My second request would be that if P S and G, for some reason, in our lifetime, does not choose to extend the trolley line trail, that we have not precluded. An option to reach Plainsboro in some other way through the edge of those properties. Um, and that if that could. Those options for the township could somehow be included in at the end of those sections of those two properties in this master plan. I would really appreciate that, I'd like to really see. At some point, hopefully in our lifetime. The sidewalk and a safe route to school to high school south, high school north, community and Millstone Schools.
So I'm sorry, you 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 want the sidewalk to continue on and.
The north, yeah, so you've got on the north side, I still think it should be on the south side, but on the north side you have. It'll end just after, right now, there's a sidewalk in my neighborhood that um, goes just past steel, then you've got. Horse paddock, you've got. Rover mill, Rover's auto repair or something that.
Right.
I'm not going to say what the back of it looks like. And then you get to Sanders Farm. It's a long stretch along Cranberry Road till Rabbit Hill. And then you have Wildflower and there's the. Um, P S and G line that goes through Wildflower that right now they've given a ninety nine year lease to Wildflower and they will never, and that's why they're not developing it as a trail.
Any develop, any development that we that comes here, we always ask for sidewalk to be uh, continued on. Yeah, Sam. If it came before the planning board, you'd ask for sidewalks.
Yeah, but I think what the resident's saying like is that if the Sanders Farm is farm preserved, it will never come here. And she wants to make sure there's no restrictions when the Sanders sell the development rights, that in the future. The town could put a multipurpose trail along Cranberry Road on the frontage of the Sanders Farm.
Okay.
Sam, is there any reason we can't add a line to those two saying?
No, I I don't think so, Joe, is there?
When they're preserved, township should reserve the right to put the sidewalk on the side of the farm.
Certainly add that.
Yeah, we can add to both of them.
Yep, that sounds good. Okay, um, anything else on proposal, anybody?
No, I just have a my uh. I just want to say something about numbering of the map. Uh, like map oh one, map oh one, repeated so many times, so.
Yeah, it's different quads, I had.
Yeah, I know, so what I'm suggesting, map oh one is a general map, then cross to be map oh one dash one. Map oh one dash two, so that we clarify.
I agree with you. Actually, map one does, I. Was designed to identify the four quads, it's just not clear enough.
Maybe oh one dash. Oh, one dash one, oh one dash two, oh one dash three and four.
However, you did it in the circulation element.
That was.
Follow through.
Yes.
I'd like to say is for whatever maps we do, we have quads of maps, it's the similar. Uh, syntax of labeling. A a general, a document question, Joe. Wherever in a footnote, a web page, web link is mentioned, will that be a hyperlink in the document? So that the reader can link to whatever the footnote is.
I was talking to David about that. Yes, I know we have.
Was was there any consideration of vertical farms in the building, you're you're actually, you're going straight up. Um, instead of out. And it was sixteen minutes or somewhere had a had a special word on it, it's very good.
Yeah, but they're growing cannabis and. I have no, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, keep it in the building, you know? Yeah. Is that something we could like just put on the list to?
That we can also.
Yes.
Hey, Mike, maybe you want to get any public who wants to comment and then we could.
And general, another comment I have, A appendix B tables, you want to define what tables? Just say tables only, will you define what type of tables are?
Yeah. The appendix needs to be labeled.
Appendix B.
Like what are what are the tables showing? Maybe uh. Details there and so just.
That would be clarified.
Okay, um, anybody, anybody from the public would like to speak, please step up.
Oh.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, John Church, eleven Princeton Place again. On page forty nine, I think there is a. Uh, a small error here, we're talking about power and energy. Uh, I think instead of seven, six hundred and fifty four megawatts of power, I think the. What was meant was six hundred and fifty four megawatt hours of energy. There's a distinction between power and energy. Energy is power times time, like a kilowatt hour is energy and a kilowatt is power. So I think that should be reword reworded to say six hundred and fifty four megawatt hours of energy. Instead of six hundred and fifty four megawatts of power.
Can we spell, can we spell out megawatts also and then acronym M W, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Or M W H.
Should be, yeah, okay, so it should be. Mega megawatt hours of energy, not megawatts of power, okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John, anybody else?
Um, Stacy Fox, twenty nine Marion Avenue. Um, may seem like a small thing, but in section three, two, I don't think we should use the word unique. Because just by definition, it suggests that there's like one, never been done anywhere else before.
That's defined without a definition.
Unique is like one of a kind, period, so I don't think in farming there's such a thing, but just for you to think about, talk about amongst yourselves. It was section three item two, yeah.
Stacy, I'm wondering if the term unique farmland in this context is actually terminology taken directly from natural.
Could be, yeah, it could be, but we know what it means, so it just might be something that you want to.
Their wording and definitions.
That's their wording, okay, well, shame on them. I'm not judging anyone here then, um.
Yeah, all the all these, all these defined soil inventories are. Yeah, they're they're not our definition.
Okay. Okay, all right, so um. I just, when I heard you say that cannabis was banned from the Freedom to Farm Act, I thought that was probably done before it became legal and maybe you all should look at. Making sure that it's no longer banned. Um, we actually have a shop like right in town that does good business and it's a good moneymaker, so if you are looking to preserve, I mean, this. This master plan has a lot of language about being devoted to land preservation and that could probably fund a lot.
We were to incorporate unbanned or allow it, can we have a West Windsor cannabis tax?
We 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 can have, nothing is, there's nothing in West Windsor. The nearest shop is in Lawrenceville, you love to cross.
It's right where that crossover pointed.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, I I can't say exactly where it is because I've never been there. Yeah, yeah, so that's technically Lawrence, okay, well, you know, it's right in the neighborhood. Same uh, client base, I imagine, yeah.
We had when I proposed a West Windsor sales tax on cannabis.
Yeah. No, it's, I think it's a really good moneymaker, yeah.
I'm not a part taker, but anybody else who wants to, it's fine with me.
Well, I think, I think it should, if you can, if you can farm it, I think how we look at open space could. Really have a lot of dollar signs, um. So when I was looking at the chart here, where it said, um. You know, that certain, a lot, a long list of properties, like the ones in red. And then the ones in section four two were already approved for development. There's a lot of properties there, so when did all of those, like, what was the process, how did all of those get already approved for development?
Which page are you on?
Um, page sixteen. And then the one page after that as well, there's, it's not in red, but on the section four two, open space funding acquisitions. There's a, there's a table of non-preserved farmland with development approvals and that's a big list. And then on page sixteen, there's a lot of um, farmland not preserved. In in red, highlighted in red. And it states that they're already approved for development. So like, there's a lot of properties there, I'm just wondering, when were they approved, like, what was the process?
Sam, you.
There are already projects on each one of these?
Yeah, yeah, they they, Stacy, this this. I guess it was back in ninety four or ninety five is when we had the open space tax. And a lot of those approvals go back twenty years. They, like for Carnegie Center, they have a general development plan approval, a lot of their properties currently being farmed. But it has approvals on it to put office space or laboratories on it and so forth, so.
Do those expire?
Uh, the general development plan, I think this board just renewed it a couple of years ago for another ten year period for their approvals.
Well, given the master plan has so much verbiage on being devoted to preservation, why would we extend that approval if they're farming it? Seems like they're right aligned with our goals.
A lot of the problems are those farms are isolated, several of the farms that we lease out to farmers, they're so isolated. They pay us rent very minimal, but they never farm it anymore because it's a hassle to get the farm equipment over to that side of town to do the farming. And the only reason some of those properties on Route One are farmed is so those property owners, those developers can get farmland assessment on those properties.
So they're looking at a potential tax loophole, I understand that. Um, but at the same time, someone like me might think that paving it over. Um. Leaving it vacant might still be a lesser of evils, but I'll leave that for you all to debate. And um, the last thing is, I was very excited to hear that I could bring my emotional support llama. So I'll bring him to the next meeting and.
You can do that.
Maybe a litter box in the back.
He's house trained?
Uh, yeah, litter box.
Come in, he's a pet.
Six litter box, thank you.
Mike, on uh, page forty seven, uh, there's just a typo. Uh, half, just after table nine, there's the word pop and I believe that word should be topic. You add I see.
I'm sorry, where is that?
Uh, page forty seven, just after table nine. So the length of leases has been a top of discussion, a topic of discussion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if the board agrees, I think the changes here we can do and then schedule for an adoption sometime in March. Make the changes and do that.
Sure.
No, I'll just be away, I I looked at the calendar, um. It's on the calendar here or?
Word fifteen.
It's okay, all right, because I'll be waiting.
Yeah, sure, yes, please.
I spoke to a lot of people who wanted to come tonight, um. But found out too last minute and couldn't come. This was only one meeting and I, their assumption was that there were going to be a series of meetings based on the size of the document and they thought they might have more of an opportunity for public comment. So if if the next meeting on this is going to be an adoption, can you uh, reach out to the community um, that let them know that you're accepting via email? Um, public comments or they can come to other other meetings prior to, you know, as a non-agenda item, come in and bring their public comments. Because um, we were fortunate enough to enjoy a bit of a town hall feeling tonight, um, because there were just a couple of us, but um. I know there's a lot of people who want to take some time and read through it and chime in.
Yeah, e- email, e-mails would not be acceptable, this would be a formal public hearing. At which anybody could come and testify under oath, but they'd have to be here and testify.
So the only opportunity is other meetings before those agenda items, they would come in and chime in.
It would be whenever it's scheduled for that uh, for that night, but as I say, we we'd open it up, there'd be a formal hearing, we'd provide notice. Um, and any member of the public can testify.
Okay, all right.
They can't send in comments now?
Well, they could send in comments on the draft if if they want.
Yeah, Sam, aren't you, this is going to be posted, right?
Keep in mind, I mean, it's when we advertise for adoption. If a lot of changes are made to the document, then we can't adopt that night, we're going to have to make the changes and come back again.
Okay, and um. So what what about, what about if public comments come in between, let's say, now and February fifteenth and then. We, you know, do we have to have maybe a meeting?
We just have, we schedule for the public hearing in March and if there's a lot of changes because public comment, then we make the changes and reschedule for another meeting.
Yeah, I mean.
There's no deadline on adopting, right?
No, it's just, we're we're also looking to adopt a stormwater management plan this year and a conservation plan element this year. So it's just, you know, we're just slowly moving down, but we'll notice for March, if there's a lot of comments and Jerry determines that. It's it's, we're going to have to can readvertise for another meeting, then we readvertise for another meeting.
Jerry, question for you, so. If if let's say our next board meeting, public stands up on, it's a non-agenda item because it's not, they can make comments on. This application, now it's out, okay, this this farmland document, correct? Okay, so so between now and one fifteen, if people want to comment during the public comment section. They want to step up and make some comments about the document, they can. And, you know, we'll discuss and if we make change, we may make changes, we may, you know, say thank you and bunch of doesn't make any sense. Or we may uh, adopt those changes in in time for adoption in March, is that okay? Okay.
And Stacy, public comments is at the beginning of the meeting. And Stacy, public comments is at the beginning of the meetings from now on.
Move it at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, great.
And Sam, when we get it back, the final version, can, can I get a version with the tracking changes?
We can do that.
Yeah, just, we, we just.
Typically, what Dave does is he'll give a clean copy and then there'll be a separate copy that has to track changes.
Any, any other discussion on it? Make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
Who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um.
One, one, just a quick sec, next week it's canceled, we do have an application on for January twenty-fifth. And some of you have made a notice that the council has been meeting over in the municipal building. We probably won't be meeting over there till March, there's just other equipment they need for our type of technical meetings that they don't have yet. That's why we're not meeting over there.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Uh, here in the business, meeting adjourned at nine fifteen.